...tomally shops in Orange County. I'll take two.
So whether you're getting a haircut or buying a car, when you shop in Santana, you support our local economy, help create jobs, and support our youth, education, and community.
From downtown Santana to South Coast, shop local, shop Santana.
But I have to tell you that there's a lot of great ideas that can be of benefit to the community, but it cannot be possible if you don't have leaders with vision and leaders with commitment and tenacity to get things done. It's not every day that council members, seven of them, that have different needs that can come together and approve $332,000, to construct this wonderful exercise park that's going to have a drinking fountain, outside gym equipment, a decomposed granite walkway, a river rock dry stream bed, lighting, drought-tolerant landscape because of the need of water. It'll still be very beautiful. Six-foot wrought iron fence and a bike rack. And, you know, one of the champions, early on, even before she got to the council about health, is the councilwoman that represents this ward. And that's Councilwoman Michelle Martinez. So please help me welcome Councilwoman Martinez.[298.83][298.83](APPLAUSE)
I want to thank our council. They couldn't be here today, but I'm here representing my colleagues and, you know, I certainly represent this ward. And I'll tell you that this wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for our staff. I'll tell you that we have champions within our staff that want to move us in the right direction. So I want to thank our executive director, Hidardo Moinet, Jeanie Hudado, Ron Ono. You know, our Parks and Rec staff have been there from the very beginning. They just needed the leadership from the top and really set the right policy so they can do the right things. And, you know, the council came together and realized the importance of really bringing a community together and bringing the amenities and the necessities for a community like this. And I want to thank the Sacred organization. I see a Polina here. But I also want to thank, before Sacred came about, Latino Health Access has been here for over 20-plus years. And I want to thank them because before I was even a council member and I was contemplating and running, I had a great relationship with America Bracho. America Bracho has known me since I was 15-years-old. And she shares that story. And I'll tell you that as the years progressed and I decided to run for office at the age of 24 and started campaigning, she always put that in my ear, that health was very important and the resistance of the city and what they were trying to do. And so I took it upon myself when I got elected to be a champion of health, but to be a champion for people that were not providing the voice at City Hall. And this is what this really is about. It's about now bringing voices together. At one point in time many years ago, you wouldn't see a Polina or folks at Sacred on the eighth floor. They weren't allowed up there. And today, we see them more so than anyone else. So that's a testament that things are changing at City Hall and that we're listening to all people, all walks of life here in the city of Santana to better this community. I want to thank our explorers. I know recently they just won some recognition. And so I want to thank you guys for being here and being partners of our Parks and Recreation ground opening here. But there's a correlation here. When we talk about health and we talk about public safety, we need to work together hand in hand because people are not going to want to come to this exercise park if they don't feel safe. People are not going to want to go off to our community center or everything else that we do in regards to public health if it's not safe. And so we need to continue to work with our police department so that our families could appreciate and share the great opportunities that we're providing for all of you here.
One, two, three.[469.27][469.27](APPLAUSE)
Para la ciudad de Santana es importante porque es parte de su desarrollo. Y para la comunidad es importante porque nuestros niños ya no van a estar en cuatro paredes, sino van a tener un lugar donde puedan hacer ejercicio y no tengan obesidad. Es importante para su salud y para el bienestar de toda la comunidad. Anteriormente, ya no se contaba con espacios abiertos para la comunidad en general, pero hoy en día nos están escuchando y este es un ejemplo de eso que estamos pidiendo.
Well, one, as you know, in this area, the ZIP Code 92701 was very park poor. And today, with the leadership of the council and our city staff, we've been able not only to bring a community center to the Garfield Elementary School that will provide exercise and leisure activities, but here now in this site, we'll be able to provide an exercise equipment. And again, people who want to ride their bikes over here can do that as well. And so I think it's very important for this community. One, because we all know that in the Latino community, type 2 diabetes has plagued our community. And one thing that I know as I've walked and I've talked to our residents, they've always asked that they needed outdoor activities because it's a very dense community here, many apartments. And in those apartments, you weren't able to play within the structure. And so now they will be able to either come out right across the street and come here, starting April, and utilize the exercise equipment and be fit. Open space and joint use has been very important to this community. And so we heard them loud and clear. And we made a commitment to providing as much park and open space and joint use here in this 92701 because it was the most park, poor park area in the entire city. And so now we're very fortunate that we're increasing our park space here with the joint use with the school district and then here with property of the city of Santana.
Here at the Santana History Room, we're committed to fostering an interest in local history by collecting, preserving, and making available materials of enduring historical value related to the development of the city of Santana. You can discover your community's rich history, contribute to its preservation, and become part of the history to come. History is more than just the past. It's alive all around us, just waiting to be discovered. So come check us out at the Santana Public Library and start your own journey.
Bienvenida la primavera. Welcome to the spring. This is the second time we're doing this. This is the segunda vez que estamos haciendo Plaza Primavera. Se va, va a haber actividades, música, pan dulce hasta las siete. And we're going to have activities and music, live music, and pan dulce. And the event will end at seven. Y la razón que se pueden hacer estos programas para la comunidad es por el alto apoyo de nuestros líderes. The reason that we're able to do these programs for the community is because of the support from our leaders. We're very fortunate today. Tenemos la gran fortuna to have our councilwoman, our councilmember Angie Amescua here. And she wants to come and say hi, councilmember Amescua.
Thank you, Hidardo. Gracias, Hidardo. Me da mucho gusto estar aquí con ustedes un poquito esta tarde celebrando el inicio de la primavera. A mí me gusta mucho ver eventos como este donde las familias se pueden reunir y pasar un rato muy agradable. La ciudad está haciendo estos eventos casi cada mes, ¿verdad, Hidardo? Cada mes, y estamos muy orgullosos de eso. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Plaza Primavera. It's a pleasure for me to be here today. I'm really happy to that the city is bringing events like this periodically, about every month, where families can come and spend a good time here in our beautiful downtown. Today, I had also an event at the zoo earlier. So if anybody needs to go out there and see the new exhibit, we have some osloths in the Santana Zoo. Estaba diciendo que en el zoológico de Santana acaban de abrir una nueva exhibición de unos gatitos originarios de Brasil para también que disfruten ahí con sus familias y sus niños. I hope everyone has a great time and thank you.
A veces estaba a punto de irte a buscar. Dime qué cosa me hiciste que no te fuera olvidado. Si vieron. Yo como te recuerdo y en mis locos espero. Le pido a Dios que vuelvas. Que vieras. Yo como te recuerdo será porque aún te quiero. Y espero que tú escuches esta canción.
It's important for youth to come to events like this. One is that they could see other youth expressing their talents, their abilities. In fact, my daughter's performing tonight, so I'm pretty excited about that. We have behind us right now the band. And it just, again, fosters that sense of pride in Santana and our city. And I think they're able to see people giving back and hopefully inspire them to do the same, give back and celebrate the sense of community and just the beauty that is the city of Santana.
Do you want to please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing, we have Chaplain Bob Barnett is going to give us our vocation this evening.
Lord God, we begin this evening by inviting your presence. We're always grateful for the many blessings you bestow upon us. We're thankful for our leadership. We pray, Lord God, that you would give them wisdom as tools in your hand. And we ask a blessing upon our city. Lord God, there'd be an overwhelming sense of your presence and a peace, Lord God, that always confounds understanding. Blessed this evening, blessed those to be honored this night for their achievement and their work and the service they've given to the community. In the name of the Lord, amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. I'm going to call upon Mayor Protem Vince Armiento to make the first presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I could have David Torres, if he's in the audience, come join me up here. Welcome. Thank you. Oh, no, we want you to come up here. We don't want you far. We want you right next to me. So as Mr. Torres is coming forward, I want to thank him for joining us. And this is a very special recognition for somebody who was forwarded to me by friends and neighbors in Delhi because they thought it was such an important thing. Welcome, David. Thank you for joining us. And so this is somebody who's lent his talents and skills and time to the Delhi Center, which is a very important place. I'm not sure if anybody doesn't know where it's at, but it's in the Delhi neighborhood, right next to the Vida de la Lupe Church on Central. But it's been a community center that's been a hub and a place that, you know, people gather and people meet. And there's a lot of special things going on. But David has been a special, you know, sort of person there and has taught many people and has helped many people and touched the lives of many people there. So I want to just recognize him just for a few moments and say a few words and turn the mic over to him so he can talk to us about what he does and his commitment and dedication as a mariachi instructor. So I thought maybe you were going to come in your chador outfit with a hat, but not today, the next time. So we'll do it then. But let me tell you a little bit about Mr. Torres Solis. David Torres Solis was born in San Miguel de la Paz, Jalisco, Mexico, where he attended school. And in his home state of Jalisco, received his degree from the Universidad Autónoma Benito Juárez de Oaxaca. David has been a longtime mariachi instructor. And having taught there, having taught for more than 30 years, he's been teaching mariachi to the kids and young people there since 2001. So that's a great thing. And David's musical initiation program includes auditory education, vocal education, rhythm, musical expression, instrument practice, spatial and temporal orientation, and the musical initiation cycle. That sounds really complicated. So when you hear mariachi music, it's fun and, you know, you see people dancing around the hat. It's more complicated than that, right? A lot more complicated. So four of his students have gone on to become professional mariachis. Any groups that we know that they've joined or any ones of notable, you know, name? Groups that they've joined?
Yes.
Okay, you'll tell us about it. All right. All right. So David and the Delhi Center are proud to serve as a door of opportunity into the fascinating world of music. And from his point of view, the musical initiation cycle has always played an important role in their pedagogy. So he's a true artist and, you know, somebody who's very committed and devoted to his students and his music. And David, why don't you tell us a few words about what else you do there at the Delhi Center?
Okay. I'm sorry about my voice. I have a little sick. About, I have about 16-years in Delhi teaching mariachi music. And I want a person to say thank you to my God for my beautiful life because my life is music. I enjoy it too much. And I want to say thank you to my beautiful wife and my daughter and my son.
Stand up. Is she here? Mrs. Torres?
Yeah. And Adriana La Morenita, California, my music assistant and my students. Thank you. Thank you for supporting me for many, many years. And God bless you. Thanks so much.
Muchas gracias, señor Torres. Y pues le voy a dedicar esto en español. Si no es mucho problema. Es un certificado de reconocimiento a usted, David Torres, en reconocimiento de lo que se dedicó a ser instructor de mariachi en el centro de Delhi. Y le damos muchas gracias por servir la comunidad este quinto día de julio 2016. Felicidades.
Gracias.
Y una fotito.
Good evening. Now if I can have Sandra Bretza, Nehemia Jatib, and Ethan Robles up here with me, please. And today I will be presenting certificates of recognition to these two gentlemen who participated and are the winners of the Pitch, Hit, and Run baseball event. Sandra, Nehemia, and Ethan, am I pronouncing your names correct? What is it?
Nehemiah.
Nehemiah. Okay, thank you. And Nehemiah are pony baseball players who represented Santana at the Pitch, Hit, and Run baseball event held in May at the Angel Stadium, sponsored by Major League Baseball. Participants compete in baseball division or softball division and have the opportunity to advance through four levels of competition, including local sectionals, team championships, and the national finals at the Major League Baseball All-Star Game. The first level was held at Jerome Park with over 200 Santana athletes. Fifteen Santana athletes advanced to the sectionals, which was held at the S.A. USD Sports Complex. Then these three Santana athletes advanced to the team championships at the Angel Stadium. Sandra won second place for the age 11-12 group. Nehemiah won third place for the 7-8 to 8H group. And Ethan won third place for the 13-14H group. Sandra competed in the regional competition for the MLB Junior Home Run Derby at the Major League Baseball Urban Youth Academy in Compton, and he won. He will be the 12th West Coast representative and is getting an all-expenses-paid trip to the MLB All-Star Week for the final competition. So can we please give them a round of hands? Before I present the certificates, do you want to tell us a little bit about your experience playing at the Angel Stadium? One of you? How was it? Was it fun?
Well, playing at the Angel Stadium, it was kind of scary. And I was really nervous. Me and Sandra, we were both really nervous. We were scared. I was pretty scared if I was going to fail. But at least I at least won third place. It was pretty fun. It was pretty exciting.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Do you want to say a few words?
Playing at Angel Stadium is just a really cool experience. If any of you guys play baseball, you guys would want to do it someday. It's really cool.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for representing Santana there. So this is awarded to Nehemiah Jatib in recognition for winning third place in the Major League Baseball's Pitch, Hit, and Run event, age groups 7-8. And he's not here today, right? Do you think you can help me give that to him when you see him? And then this is awarded to Ethan Robles in recognition for winning third place in the Major League Baseball's Pitch, Hit, and Run event, age group 13-14. So congratulations. And then this is presented to Sandra Bretza in recognition for winning second place in the Major League Baseball's Pitch, Hit, and Run event, age group 11-12. Congratulations. Let's give him one more hand. And now if I could please have the winners of the Metropolitan Water District Art Contest, Faith Avila and Michael Miramontes come up to the front. Santana schools were asked to participate in the Southern California Metropolitan Water District's Poster Contest, Water is Life. The Metropolitan Water District received... The Metropolitan Water District received over 700 entries. The city of Santa Ana had two winners, Faith and David, who are sixth grade students at Mendez Middle School. This is a great accomplishment, so we're all very proud. Out of 700 entries, we had two of our Santa Ana students win. Faith and Michael were honored by the Metropolitan Water District, and their artwork will be displayed on the Metropolitan Water District's 2016 calendar. So, congratulations to both of you, although Faith is not here today. Let's give David a hand. And he does not want to say any words tonight, so I'm going to go ahead and present the award. In recognition for winning the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California's Water is Life Contest, this is awarded, this certificate is awarded to Mr. Michael Miramontes. Congratulations.
I believe Counselor Martinez, you have the next presentation, please.
Good evening. If I could have Frances, please join me with Senator Janet Wynn's office. So, I'm really delighted today to provide this proclamation, and when I'm providing the proclamation, because of course Senator Janet Wynn is in Sacramento, but what we're doing here is, one, acknowledging the great work that Senator Janet Wynn has done. Last year, in 2015, she decided to declare California in the month of July kindness. We all know, actually, maybe a week ago, week and a half ago, the Dalai Lama was here, but he was also here last year, when many of us had the opportunity, and I had the opportunity in Anaheim, and that has brought in a lot of excitement. I think last year as well, the city council, after we visited the Dalai Lama, we came back and we talked about how we should do more things about kindness, the work that the city of Anaheim was doing, how can we start a website on, and so forth, and known and behold, Janet Wynn, our senator, was already at work making sure that this was not only happening in her district, but assuring that we continue to do this across California. And so, I have all these talking notes that I will get to, but I did want to thank you for joining us, Frances, on behalf of Senator Wynn, and really just why I think it's so important for us here in the city of Santa Ana to acknowledge, one, and proclaiming the month of July kindness, but more importantly, why it's so important for us as a city and residents of this community to be kind to one another, and to pay it forward, and to do random acts of kindness. And I know there are various members of our community that do that every day. Not too long ago, Mayor Pro Tem Sarmiento acknowledged our police officers for really helping out a disabled kid that lost, you know, his bicycle, and so, and being able to replace that. That's just one act of kindness, but I know that there are several acts of kindness out there in our community, and even within our city staff, and the good things that you are doing, whether it's Coach Raya, you know, coaching on his spare time, or it's others just, you know, going out there and feeding the homeless. We have a lot of our employees that are doing that, we have residents that do that every day. So, I wanted to make sure that, one, that we're able to acknowledge what our community's doing, number two, what is our city staff doing? Because at the end of the day, you know, there's always so many negative things that the media tends to portray about Santa Ana, but there are a lot of positive things that are occurring in our city every single day, and it's because of the kindness of the residents that we have here. I always tell people, it's not the buildings that make Santa Ana special. Yes, they're historic and they're beautiful, but it's the people that live in this city that make this city special and beautiful. And so, I'm honored here today, one, to do this proclamation, and I'm going to do all the wherethes, but I wanted, just for you, Frances, to just share why Senator Wynn, and we're going to have an opportunity, there's an event coming, and I want to present the proclamation to her personally, but I wanted to make sure that we did this here, because what we're doing here is really proclaiming the month of July as well, you know, kindness month here, and hoping that we'll be able to share stories on Facebook, on and so forth. But I wanted to give you a couple minutes just to share why Senator Wynn decided to do this last year, and her continued efforts.
Let's see how you do this. I am actually the shy one in the office, so when we chatted about this, you know, it just, regrettably, the senator couldn't be here. I've worked for her for several years, and this is a rare time that she's actually on vacation, so I know she wished she could have been here, because to talk about kindness, it's just, she lights up, and she was really inspired by what happened in Anaheim. The Department Ed also adopted a kindness campaign, and some of the things that we discussed within the office was just little, that we needed to be reminded of all the wonderful things that are happening in the community. So, if I may, she actually wrote up a few things for me to share, and I'm sure she would be pleased if I actually read what she wants to say versus what I want to say. So, if I may. It is a pleasure to accept this proclamation on behalf of the residents of California's 34 Senate District, proclaiming the month of July as Kind Santa Ana Month. More than a platform to encourage residents to be kind, I believe this proclamation represents the kindness that already exists in the hearts of the residents of Santa Ana. When we reach out to our neighbor in need, host a neighborhood association meeting at our home, volunteer at a local school, or simply say thank you, we are all performing random acts of kindness. These actions, I believe, help us build a stronger sense of community, one that is more compassionate, and where our childrens and families can thrive. I want to thank Councilwoman Martinez for her leadership in bringing this initiative forward, and hope to join you in the future as we celebrate kindness of the residents of the city of Santa Ana.
Thank you. Great, very nice words from the senator. And so, when I asked our city manager and our staff that I wanted to do this kindness campaign, and it's really quite funny that when I decided to do this, I didn't know that Senator Wynn had proclaimed this at the legislature in California, but I was doing research. I, you know, have always admired Mayor Tate in the city of Anaheim, and the good work that he's been doing within Anaheim, and trying to improve kindness, and I saw him just last week at the mayor state of the city, and I told him, hey, I'm doing this proclamation, how's Anaheim doing with kindness? And I just joked with him, you know, because of the political things that have occurred there just recently, and we just laughed. But really, he's been an inspiration, one to me, beyond just the Dalai Lama and our mayor. You know, we always talk about peace, and we see all the temples in our churches, but we need to, you know, all the bad things that have been occurring across this country recently in Orlando, and the massacre that happened, you know, it is one that's very emotional for many people, and I just wanted to acknowledge very quickly that our city, we did a blood drive on, with the American Red Cross, on Thursday of June 23rd, and we had a total of 22 employees who showed up to donate blood, and that blood was headed off to help Orlando and the victims over there. And as I mentioned earlier, would like to also present this proclamation to Senator Wynn at another time. The senior center will be having a beautiful handmade visuals to place outdoor exhibits that will be displayed at Shakespeare O'Fallon on July 28th, and so, I'm going to go out there, and hopefully Senator Wynn will be able to join me, so that I can provide this proclamation. But I did want to read the proclamation, and just really encourage all our residents. I did ask our city to start a, we do have a Facebook page, or doing a Facebook, I have a Facebook, for residents to really share, you know, some of the kind things that they're doing, whether it be in their neighborhood, whether it be in school, or just here at City Hall, because we really want to shed light and really share these positive stories, not only in our newsletters, but also out there in social media and with traditional media, so that they understand that there's great positive things happening here in the city of Santa Ana. So, with that being said, I'm not going to read all the wherethes, but I'll do a couple. Whereas, an act of kindness can be simple as donating unwanted clothes, or sponsoring a child in need. Regardless of the act, the goal is to instill the importance of being kind and considerate to one another throughout our communities. And whereas, studies have shown that performing acts of kindness can increase happiness, boost one's personal satisfaction, and encourage selfishness, and whereas, this effort will bring our residents closer together, thereby having an immense and positive long-term impact on the well-being of Santa Ana residents. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Santa Ana, do hereby recognize and declare the month of July as kindness month, and encourage our residents to perform acts of kindness throughout the Santa Ana community to promote selfishness and compassion. Thank you.
I'm now going to go on with our meeting. Madam City Attorney, is there anything to report out of closed session?
We have no reportable action.
No report, okay. So, with that, I'm going to go to the consent counter and call upon Councilmember Michelle Martinez, please.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to pull 19D.
That's it?
That's it.
Wait a minute. Did you guys see this on the left? She pulled one item. No, we're all welcome to pull every item. Please, go ahead, Counselor Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just, I know it's a receive and file, but I wanted to make sure that with this receive and file, Mr. City Manager, and thank you for putting the report together, you and your staff, as I saw the timeline, and so, this summer, we're going to be putting restrooms on Second and Third, just wanting, I think on Third Street, or Second?
Third and Bush.
Third and Bush, and then also the LED lighting? Or is that already installed?
The lighting in the parking garages is done.
Is done. So, what was the second thing that's being done this summer? It was, I think it was the lighting, so that's done. So, and then, I know that we are going to be having a, I think, in the spring of next year, RFP for parking management, and so, before that RFP comes, I wanted to make sure I no longer sit on the Development and Transportation Committee. Is as we move forward, I know a lot of this modernization, is, as I know that many of our taxi services have left our city, and so, again, I bring up the Uber, I bring up the Lyft, I bring up the Zipcar possibilities within our parking management, and how can we possibly look at, you know, some of these companies? I know they're now gearing and veering into that arena to provide that kind of space, and then the automation as well, and I know that that's not cheap, it's about $15,000 per space, or $20,000, I'm not sure what those costs are, but I've been talking to various folks, because of what other cities are doing, and I'm wanting to make sure that automation and technology is extremely vital for us, and our parking structures to be more effective and efficient. And so, I'm wanting to assure that when we do this RFP, all of this stuff is included, and that we're able to make sure that we also have possibly bike infrastructure where, you know, where people can park their bikes as well. And what was the last thing I wanted to make mention? I think it's in my notes here, but hopefully I'll remember here. Oh, yes, yes, the last thing is, I saw in here that we are going to be doing beautification with murals. Are we going out to RFP for that, or is that going to be the local artist that will be doing that?
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez, and the mayor and council. We actually have begun that process, I believe we had 42 submissions, and probably tomorrow, I'll be also asking the council for recommendations for people to help serve in that committee, but it'll be both local and national artists.
Great, thank you very much, and that's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so before I take a motion on the balance of the counter, I'll just have a couple speakers, let me hear from them, please. Irma, you're here to talk about item 25I, and then Iya Tesklin, you want about 25F, 55A, and 55C, and Robert wants to do the same. Please go ahead, Irma.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, lovely evening, and I just came to thank you on behalf of Wilshire Square and our community for considering our request for a grant for our summer concert that we, this is our 20th year. So, you're all invited, you'll be getting an invitation, and get ready, because it's back to the 80s. So, Mayor, you lived in the 80s in Wilshire Square. It's back to the 80s, and we just hope you'll support us, but I love that you're doing this, not just for Wilshire Square, but for the whole city, because it really, as you just admitted...
Hold on, wait a minute, Irma, can you bring the mic down, Miss? Not yours, the one on this side. Keep going, Irma, keep going.
You alluded to kindness. This is a kind act, but it's a fun act, and that brings the community together. So, again, thank you, and I hope to all see you there, back to the 80s, and have...
Irma, in the 80s, we used to walk around and serenade people with guitar, remember that?
Oh, no, yes. Are you ready? We can do it again next year.
There you go.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Iya, are you here? You are here. Is Robert here to speak after you? All right, you start, and Robert, wherever you are, please get ready. I don't see Robert. All right, he will appear. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Pulido and Santa Ana City Council. My name is Iya Tesklin. Regarding this item of public education, I would like to talk about the situation with unusual, and people often even don't see it clearly, as people who are working with Regional Center, Orange County Regional Center. And from my experience working with Orange County Regional Center and its public offices, I want to share with you that CEO of Orange County Regional Center is actually, is a czar of this county. He is a mafia czar, and I don't say it's just for the sake of the word. I say you what is really going, I have numbers of documented evidence to see that the CEO of Orange County Regional Center and his organization is destroying the spirit and word of the most important documents of this county and country, the constitution. They do not respect the law. They consider that every public office will work for the sake to steal money and to abuse public. Unfortunately, I don't have enough time to tell what I wanted to say about them, but I will give you a small example, how they could do. They can pick the phone, call to police, and I would say order them to arrest people, innocent people. And police does not say nothing, that it's unconstitutional, it's unlawful how to do. They go, they arrest, they kidnapping, they lie, 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 and the same do every public office, including the judges like Mobley, the public defender, Ray Felton, the social services, fire department, ambulance, everybody lie, only for the cause to steal money.
Thank you. If you can conclude, your son, where is he? There is nobody else. He's not here, we're just going to move on. All right, we're just going to move on. Now, I'm going to entertain a motion on the consent counter. So, move. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those bose motion carries.
Mayor, I'd like to clarify if that includes 19D that was pulled by Councilmember Martinez, we didn't have a vote on that item.
It does.
Okay.
That included. So with that, let's go on to the next item, which is 55A. Would that be correct, madam?
Yes, that's correct.
I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the item just with clarification, making sure what we're doing here is a resolution. Again, it's required by CalPERS to state what our public employees are paying into the retirement system miscellaneous eight percent and public safety nine percent. Mr. Ryan, is that correct statement?
Correct. It used to be seven and eight. That changed when we went to the enhanced formulas, which was, I think, for the police sometime in the late nineteen nineties, and for miscellaneous members in two thousand eight. At the time, Pers said you need to change the resolutions, that the old resolutions were still in effect. They've come back, and it's kind of a cleanup item, they've asked us to update the resolutions. And that's all we're requesting.
Great, thank you, Mr. Ryan. I'll move the item, Mr. Mayor.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. 55B, I would entertain a motion. So move. Second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. One, no. A resolution 55C, this is a resolution to nominate and appoint Mayor Pro Tem Sarmiento to the Orange County Fire Authority.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself. I know that there was some dispute and some legislation, I believe, whether or not somebody could vote for their appointment to a regional committee or board, so just out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself.
Abundance of caution, I think, is a good thing.
I'm going to move the item, but I was going to ask for a speech on behalf of the person being considered, but if they're recusing themselves, move the item, man.
Motion is second, no speech. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. You can come back, Vance, motion carries. 55D, I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, have a comment, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to make a note that I see here that we are going to the voters on November eighth for a proposal of a council compensation, which I think it's long overdue, but also as well, that's embedded in here that is not transparent, and I think it should be transparent, is the health benefits and the cash out, and it's like on page eight of sixteen. And nowhere in the beginning of the memo does it indicate that. We all know that we're not supposed to be receiving any cash out of our benefits, and so by doing that, I just think that we need to be more transparent and adding it to the very beginning versus trying to hide this. And so, you know, I was able to read the resolution, and I'm just, one, disappointed that we're not being transparent with our voters. Number two, I also wanted to state that even you're giving compensation for attending this meeting, I also wanted to state that, look, there's a possibility, you know, whether, whatever happens in elections or not, but, you know, I term out of this city council in twenty eighteen, and I sit on the majority of regional board for the city council. The majority of them are unpaid, but I'm very fortunate to have a job that allows me to participate and not having to seek compensation. But when I leave, there's going to be a void and not representation at the table for Santa Ana. And I've worked tirelessly, if, here to twenty eighteen, twelve years of my service, being able to serve on those regional boards that have been unpaid. Whoever comes in will not have the job that I have, that gives me the flexibility to participate. And so I've asked in the past that boards like the Orange County Council of Governments, any council member that's representing them should get compensated, the Newport Bay Watershed, the Metropolitan Water District. I don't want any compensation. As I mentioned to you, I have a job that's flexible, that gives me the opportunity to serve at that capacity, but there may not be council members in the future that have that flexibility. And so I would encourage my colleagues to understand that we need to continue to be at the table. Big decisions are being made, and I know that there are constraints of not being able to get paid, and you have other jobs and duties that would preclude you to attending. And so I just wanted to state that for the record. It doesn't appeal to me of whether the health benefits or the, or sitting on these other boards and boards for the region or for the city. And so I'm just, as we move forward and wanting to take this to the voters, I think that's something that you all need to think about. I'm not sure if you have to take it to the voters or not, or you can do it by resolution, but it's something for you all to consider.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mayor Pro Tem?
Do we have a motion? I think we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, we do.
In any event, I think that, you know, it's interesting, I think, I'm not sure, Mr. City Manager, when the last time the compensation for this council was addressed? I think it was in the fifties, right?
Believe it or not, before I was born, and maybe even the mayor.
All right.
It's been almost sixty years since there's been any change.
So, and I think if we're asking to adjust to some standard that's set by the government code, right?
Yes.
Which amounts to about a thousand dollars a month.
Correct.
And if we break that down and we quantify how many hours are expended by the council, both on regional boards or on just council committees, I think it's below minimum wage, and well below minimum wage. So it costs us to be on this council. You know, there's a point when I think that, you know, I hope that this gets adopted by the voters, but I don't even know if it's worth accepting, you know, I mean, on my behalf. I think, you know, look, it's so nominal at that point, that maybe it just goes back into the general fund on my behalf, and, you know, hopefully if others, you know, think about that, they might want to do the same. I think that all of us have served on regional boards and commissions, and I think it's a responsibility when we do that, we take it seriously. Some of us have gone on leadership on many of those. And so, you know, I don't think that there's anything more to this than just trying to clarify something that hasn't been done. I know that there's cities of our size, similar populations, similar demographics, and similar, you know, defining qualities, that they get staff, they get compensated fully, it's a full-time job. So, again, I think sometimes you say you get what you pay for, right? So if you're, you know, not compensating somebody, and they're doing this on their spare time, you're scrambling, you're not able to do some of the things you'd like to do, you know, you get back what you put in. So, in any event, I think it should be out of our hands, it should be, you know, left to the voters to decide, and I think it's fine. I think maybe on this, on this, you know, motion, we don't have the issue of the benefits. I don't take those benefits, I refuse them, so, you know, I'm not sure if that applies as a blanket statement to everybody on, you know, on this, but I certainly don't take it. I don't think the compensation is worth taking either, actually.
Thank you for clarification. Understand the points being made, but this relates solely to salary.
All right, additional comment? Councilwoman Benavides?
Yes, question, comment and question. First of all, I'm glad that, I'm assuming that we will move this item, that the motion will carry, and I'm hopeful and glad that it's finally been brought up to a vote. It has been something we've discussed numerous times since I have been on the council ten years now. And one of the things that, for myself and a number of others on the council, I know that we were down to our last couple of years, last twenty-four or thirty or so months. And one of the things that my hope is that I am able to help leave the council, the city, our charter, in a bit of an improved place from where, when we started, when we got here a number of years ago. When we started back in ninety, back in, yeah, nineteen ninety-six, some elements of the charter were already grossly outdated, this being one of those sections of the charter. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to update this for the benefit of future councils, in reality. And, you know, there have been other residents of the city, not councilmembers, but residents of the city who have come out and have spoken to the fact that there should be at some point consideration, city of our size and a growing city, where there should be more of a, at a minimum, part-time or full-time position, as it is the case in other cities. But at least this would be a step in the right direction. My additional comment to staff is, if we are going to be placing this item, this charter amendment on the ballot, let's consider other potential charter amendments that are outdated as well. I think there might be a few others that we've discussed in the time passed. We have, I think, a couple, a meeting or two before we, that window closes. This is a cleanup item, there might be a couple others that we might want to consider coming up.
Thank you. We, Councilwoman Benavides, mayor, members of council, we had been talking about this for a long time, and so after sixty years, we presented this to you tonight. There are many, many issues on the charter. I'm not prepared to deal with those tonight or in the near future, but I do think at some point, we should do a comprehensive review of the charter, come back probably in the next election with changes.
With that, I believe we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not finished.
Oh, you weren't, I'm sorry. Please, continue.
So, it's, and I just wanted to state for the record, so section four zero two, if we, so here, yes, for section zero two, government code, so there is no increase in monthly salary share occur without first being approved by the voters pursuant to the charter amendment. So what we're doing here today is that we're asking for this to go to the voters for the approval, and as I stated from the very beginning, I don't have a problem with this city council being compensated, you know, a couple hundred dollars more, which is really nothing at the end of the day. I believe that the city council should be full-time, you know, it's obvious, you know, that this requires a lot of time, and I know it requires a lot of time, and so I don't dispute us wanting to go to the voters, and it's up to the voters to decide. What I do dispute is how it's being presented, and what we're trying to do is remedy something. And we're trying to remedy the health benefit portion. Us as council members, and as Mayor Pro Tem stated, you know, doesn't apply to him, it doesn't apply to me, and it may not apply to others, but the point is, is that what we're doing here today is making sure that you can no longer cash out your benefits, and it's going to be tied to your salary. And so I want to just, that is now being put on here, and so I state these points because it's important for us, when we talk about the sunshine ordinance on and so forth, for us to be transparent. It's, you know, and when we want to do things right, and we want the community to trust us, we need to make sure that we shed light of what we're trying to accomplish here. So it's not just the compensation, but we're also trying to remedy, you know, an issue of benefits, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't take benefits or not. I think it's important for us to realize that we need to comply with the law so that none of us get in trouble. And so that's the point that I'm wanting to make. It's not that I'm trying to say you shouldn't do this, shouldn't do that, we shouldn't be compensated or not, because at the end of the day, the last time this council was compensated was, I think, in nineteen fifty-four, as a mayor, as a city manager, mentioned to us. You know, but I want to make a point, is that ultimately, what we're trying to do here is not, and this is coming from our city managers, not coming from the city council, but this is a decision that's being brought to us, but when you look at the very beginning of the memo, and what we're asking, it's only talking about compensation, and, Ms. Madam City Attorney, can you please just please state for me, in the pro and con arguments, and I know that the city attorney's office will be able to do that, but also the public will be able to also do a pro and con within a certain time period, can you please share with me what time period that is, if they so choose to provide their statements?
So, one of the resolutions that's before you tonight actually authorizes, directs the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis, so I have to do that within thirty days from the date that, if you were to move this forward. I've left the resolutions blank with specific dates, but it does direct the city clerk to establish the dates in which pro and con arguments and rebuttals can be filed, and I don't know if you have those dates specifically, but the resolution simply says that the city clerk will prepare them in accordance with the election law. So I will do an impartial analysis. My impartial analysis will go in the ballot materials and will simply explain to the public what this measure is about, and then the pro and con arguments will come from different folks. The resolution does authorize the city council as a team to come up with an argument and file it if you so choose to do so.
Mayor, members of the council, the calendar will be established once the council approves this item, so I didn't want to prepare it ahead of time, not necessarily knowing if this item was going to be approved or not. So after tonight's decision, if the item is moved, I'll work on a calendar and publish the calendar on the city's website, and also publish the legal notices in the paper, letting the public know that this item is being proposed and that the arguments can be filed.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Additional comment? Go ahead, Councilwoman Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor. One is, just wanted to clarify that the, there was a question about benefits. I think, Mr. City Manager, you clarified that the item that's being posed here strictly to address salary compensation, right? So, correct?
It is, but I think the clarification comes in in this. One of the reasons that, we wanted to address this item for numerous reasons. There's many reasons why we want to just modernize, and I think that was the language that was in the RFA, kind of modernize things. There's language in the actual attachment, which is basically saying that any other types of benefits that the council receives, if there's some type of cash value to them, like a auto allowance or reimbursement, or a health benefit, that those things are not considered salary. So it's just a, what she's, I think what Councilmember Martinez is referring to is language that does refer to that issue, but it's clarified, it'll now be in the charter forever fixed, that those items are not considered salary as you move forward.
Second question is, with regard to compensation for any other boards, commissions, regional boards, where one is representing the city, is that something that can be addressed by resolution on behalf of the council? Is this what's being presented here, and the language would not preclude us from a later time providing some type of remuneration for a member of the council to serve on a regional board, correct?
So, most of the stipends that come from regional boards come from the bodies of those boards provided through their policy, so you have no control over that. The way this item is currently presented-
So in the cases, so, I'm sorry for interrupting, but, in the cases where there isn't some type of compensation from board, because there are a number of those where they don't provide any type of compensation.
So there's only one other case where you're provided some type of form of compensation that isn't directly put into your charter, that would be like for the independent housing authority, like your former redevelopment agency. Those stipends were provided by state law and did not, were not required to be in your charter, but any other additional forms of what we call compensation or salary would have to go back and be approved by the voters under the charter. So what this measure would do is basically say that you only get the cash that's provided for in section four oh two, i.e. the salary, and then any reimbursement or car allowances or whatnot that are approved by resolution. You would not be able to go forward and allow council members to receive additional compensation for serving on other boards or serving on council committees or whatnot, without going back to the voters, as currently drafted.
Okay. I would, now, I don't want to do this from, you know, try to change in language from here, but I would, would, I think it's in our best interest to not tie ourselves, basically to allow some, an opportunity for a council member to serve on a regional board or commission, and for the council body to be able to decide if there is to be some compensation for that. There are a number of these regional boards and bodies. To, I agree with Councilwoman Martinez, where they're, where we do, we have had the benefit that she has been serving on a number of those, where it does create the city of Santa Ana to have a place at the table. She's been gracious enough to serve there by her own will and without any type of compensation. However, some of these are regional, where you actually have to travel outside, it's not within the city, it's not even in a neighboring city, you have to travel in some cases outside of the county because it's a broader board, and there is benefit to our city. There have been certain situations where we have received certain grants, certain funding to our city because we do have- funding to our city because we do have a member of the council who's on that, who represents the city, so there is benefit. We have had a difficult enough time even getting this 1954 language updated, so we haven't addressed other needs to be able to change, modify and modernize and update other competition for other boards. So I just would want to make sure that, I'd prefer, and I'd leave it to the council to give, in addition to pass this and give you that specific direction to modify the language a bit to allow for, to address this issue in the future. Otherwise, it's, this basically goes into city constitution and it wouldn't be able to be changed, our hands would be tied. And again, to my point when I started, my comments is, I want to make sure that we're looking towards the future and we're not tying the hands of future councils because it sounds good right now and it meets our immediate needs, but then it, we're kind of kicking the cannon down the road and saying that somebody else deal with it later. If we're going to take something to the, looking at making a charter amendment, considering a charter amendment, let's do it right and let's look at, you know, consider these other factors so that we're not having to, you know, in retrospect, you know, hindsight's 2020, look back, rear of the mirror, once, if and once this passes, and say we should have done that and cleaned that up and created that, modified the language a bit to be able to make amends or make room for that compensation for the regional boards, again, for the benefit of the city.
Mayor, Members of the Council, if I understand it, is you are suggesting approval of this tonight, but coming back later with additional changes?
That could be one way, would we have a window to, if, I think you addressed that earlier?
I guess that we're very, very close to the window and the issue for me is you have to be specific in terms of the dollar amount, you can't leave it open-ended or have the body then decide how much you're going to pay out there, I think that's in conflict with the charter. So if you believe that the salary should be higher to reflect the additional commitments is what we're doing today, then you're outside the government code, right, Sonia? And then you have to come up with a number and then it might be more difficult.
So if you had something specific in mind and if you wanted to say, you know, for every outside regional board that the council member sits on that's not compensated, you know, by that outside board, we will pay an additional twenty-five dollars a meeting, you could do that, that's fairly simple language, that's something I could add to the, add here. But I would strongly recommend doing what some other cities have done and really quite frankly have gotten them in trouble, of saying we're going to pay our council members for service to these regional boards and not set a dollar amount, I think that's what the city manager is referring to. That would not, I understand that you want that maximum flexibility, but I can tell you that has gotten some cities in some very serious trouble. So if you were going to go in that direction, I'd recommend that you actually set a number. And I know the numbers are troublesome because then you got to go back to the charter to go clean it up and that's just the double-edged sword. I think that's why so many of your fellow charter cities with populations of more than one-hundred-and-fifty thousand have a significantly higher salary amount, because they're compensating their council members for the additional work that they do. We were trying to make a modest proposal that could both address the problem, wasn't going to fix something that was started in fifty-seven, so this proposal is a modest proposal, but in fact, it leaves some issues on the table.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate what the council member is saying, because he's actually been one of the few that's wanted to take this on since he, since he got on the council, so I appreciate the fact that Councilman Benavides has thoughtfully, you know, brought this before us, but it is very difficult to leave it open-ended because I mean, you see other cities that have abused this. I know that we, we believe we wouldn't abuse this and we want to be able to allow and incentivize participation in other boards and regional committees and there's some value and, you know, the value is debatable. Sometimes we do go to these boards and nothing gets done for the city and it's a waste of our time as it is much, you know, sometimes an exercise and just futility dealing with the other thirty-three cities in this county. But nonetheless, I think we want to make sure that we have that flexibility, but the flexibility is I think what's gotten others into trouble and unfortunately, we're forever tarnished as a result and it makes it very difficult for us to be able to have that because we've seen other folks abuse that and so that's the dilemma. And I do think that we're, this is an extremely modest request, again, it's a very nominal thing, I don't know how much it'll change, you know, what we're trying to achieve, because I do think that it's just so disproportionately out of whack what we devote and what's invested here as work to what actually the compensation is, that, you know, quite frankly, what it does is it limits the pool of people and candidates who even want to run, because they know that it's going to infringe upon their family, their time, their careers, and so we get a smaller and smaller pool of people who actually want to even run for these offices. So that's my fear, is that then you're going to have just folks who are independently wealthy or they have some practice or some profession that is going to allow them to do this, but it really does dwindle down the people that have the ability to even do this. So that's my fear and that's one of the reasons why I think I've always thought that what the councilmen's tried to do has been a good thing, because once you open it up, you provide a fair salary, then anybody in the community is eligible for this and it makes it a much more fair, more equitable group of candidates, but those are my two cents.
All right, I think we've had a good discussion, now there's more. Please go ahead, Councilor Reina.
So a question for staff and I guess I'm looking at Sonia. We have so many local committees amongst ourselves in the community that we sit on, whether it be Pray or whatnot, and we have a few that are the regional, whether it be the Fire Authority or the Water District. Some of those ones that are the regional that come with the stipend, we have a fixed seat on those particular committees?
For the most part, yes. Their bylaws say that Santa Ana gets a fixed seat and it's a compensated seat.
And then the other ones that we don't receive compensation, we don't have a fixed seat, they're optional?
And it just may be that as a regional entity, let's just say, I'm going to think of one like the League of California Cities, maybe you're serving on the Board of Directors as I know one of our council members does, the League of California Cities does not compensate anybody to serve, those are all considered volunteer positions.
And again, I'm not saying that we don't benefit from it, I'm just trying to be clear on what that looks like.
Correct, yes. But it does take time, you've got to attend a monthly meeting, you travel up to Sacramento...
For those that have the luxury of that flexibility at that time and for those that don't have it, obviously they're limited on what they can serve on.
Yes, correct. So the difference is that some of your regional boards have compensated seats, some of your regional boards and entities, they're purely volunteer.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to state for the record that the Orange County Council of Government, and to sit on SCAG, you have to sit on the Orange County Council of Government and that's why I sit on the Orange County Council of Governments, which is not compensated. The Newport Bay watershed, we give hundreds of thousands of dollars for our MS4 permit, you know, so, and attune sometimes of millions of dollars, we have a seat at that table as well and you certainly, and then, and of course, the Metropolitan Water District, right? So these are three key, you know, positions and so I'm just stating, look, good, bad or indifferent, I just appreciate Councilman Benavides supporting this, whether they want to do this or not, it's just that you may not have another council member that has a flexibility and that I get paid to go to these things. I don't foresee you ever have, you will ever have another council member like me that has had the opportunity to serve on all these regional boards and the California League of Cities. And so I'm just wanting to make sure, and we all know this is that, and Mayor Protem stated it very well, he was eloquent about this, that most people that sit on these councils, you can't be a poor politician, right? Most folks that sit on councils are typically retired or they have the means to sit on this city councils and it's very difficult to get people to wanting to run because you sacrifice a lot. And so that's just a point stated and yes, there are other city councils that are, I'll give a great example, the city of Compton, sixty thousand dollars a council member makes a year, you know, their population's no more than fifty thousand, than fifty thousand people. Cleveland, seventy-five thousand dollars a year and the financial ruins that they are under and so I'm just giving just examples, so what we're asking here, it is very modest and it's not that I'm opposed, it's that I want us to be forward-thinking, is that if you're going to want to have good people that have the flexibility to set good sound policy, you know, we need to make sure that if we're going to go to the voters, and it's really up to the voters to decide yea or nay, but we should make sure that we do our homework and make sure that we put the best proposal forward that makes the most sense. This may because of time, it may not, but I brought this up in the past, I've also brought it up in the past, that we should be a full-time city council. You know, no one agreed with me on that, but I'm, I think at the end of the day, the city is large enough to have a full-time city council and it's possibly going to be needed in future years as the city continues to grow.
All right, so with that, I think we're ready to vote, yes? We do, I, we had a motion in a second a long time ago. We did. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Madam City Clerk, where are we now?
We're at sixty-five eight.
Let me go ahead and bring it back, maybe Councilor Benavides, but I believe we also have somebody that's going to recuse themselves, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to recuse myself. I received a financial contribution to my campaign committee from the applicant and so that's going to bar me from participating, so I will recuse myself, thank you.
Let me now call on... I'm sorry, just a quick, Councilman, is it something that you're looking into or there's a certainty that, previously in this conversation, you may have mentioned that it might be a temporary need to recuse and I just want to clarify right now since it's going on record, in case you were able to and interested in participating in the future, I just didn't want to have you be barred from participating.
There may be an outside chance that we can go ahead and cure the conflict and have that removed in the future, but because right now that hasn't been addressed, I won't be able to participate tonight.
So today there's a conflict.
Yeah. That doesn't mean that the conflict can be lifted, but I know we're, I was in conversations today with the city attorney and with the city clerk and we've all unfortunately, I think, shaken our heads because our municipal code really doesn't speak to this issue and how you, how you're able to unwind a conflict when you receive a financial contribution from somebody who's doing business with the city. It's silent as to that point. The FPPC has some language that gives some guidance, but we're not governed by that, we're governed by our municipal code. So that's some research that still needs to be done. I'm hoping that the conflict can be lifted and removed and mooted at some point, but that's not, I can't say that with certainty tonight.
Thank you for...
Councilor Martinez?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just want our city attorney to state, as you know, I am running for another office and just wanting to state, Madam City Attorney, that I have the right to vote on any item that has to do with the city of Santa Ana and not having to pertain with any other office that I'm seeking.
Yes. I just want to clarify that, because I think that's an important point. The charter has a provision that if you receive a campaign contribution, you're disqualified from voting on any action that might affect, they define it as a major contribution, campaign contributor. I have looked at historic documents as well as done the analysis myself and we have not traditionally in this city interpreted that provision to disqualify when the campaign contribution is for an office not within the city of Santa Ana, when that office is either for a state office, a county office, or another office, not one of the municipal office positions that you all serve as council members. So yes, I can confirm that and I did tell you I will look for the written memorandum from my predecessors as well as provide you one for myself if you wish.
Great, thank you very much, just want to state that for the record, because most folks know that I'm seeking another office and don't want people saying that I receive contributions from others that has nothing to do with my city council race, has to do with another race.
Thank you for that. Let me now call on Councilor David Benavides, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As the only member of the Development Committee at this point left on the day of San, I will go ahead and provide a little bit of context and why we're, what brought us here and I was hoping that Mayor Protem Sarmiento would be able to remain and participate, because he has been chairman of the Development and Transportation Committee of the Council for a number of years and could provide some background as well. At this point, what we have here is a property at Third and Broadway, parking structure that the city owns and developed some years back, where a number of years ago, we saw it as a potential development opportunity, there's a lot of investment going on in the city, in our downtown in particular, it's a prime location, there is at this point that the structure with time has been falling in disrepair and the city has had to consider whether we go and invest quite a bit of money into bringing that project up to par and making improvements or whether we take other, make other considerations. So a number of years back, we decided it's a prime location for development, let's go ahead and consider starting all over and taking this asset and building it into a potential mixed-use development. We went out and did a request for qualification, the staff report here gives the date of September two thousand fourteen, that was for the second request for qualification, if I remember correctly, I believe it was two thousand twelve or thirteen that we went out for the first time on an RFQ. So we've gone through this process a couple of times. Back in fourteen, we had a number of proposals that came through. One of them that, per the staff report here, the staff was recommending the Development Transportation Committee consider, we spoke with that applicant, the council committee made some recommendations, the applicant then went away and was no longer interested in the project. One of the things that we were requesting and seeing an opportunity for is a hospitality component, mixed-use housing as well. And at this point, we have an applicant who's gone through several steps with us, with the council, with the city and at the last meeting, we're, asked the staff to come back with a few options. Again, this has been a number of years that we've been kind of, this has been going on for a period of time and there's a, something we want to do is get unstuck and actually see something happen in this location. So of the, of the options that the staff was able to put together, I think there's a few that, that council may want to consider or that are options for us to consider. Again, one of the main reasons that we are bringing this forward, part of the fiduciary responsibility of the, of the council is to ensure that we're being responsible with the resources of the public and that we see also opportunities for economic development, for growth in our city. And doing some development in this location is, would be a benefit to the city. So with that, some of the, I did want to, want to discuss, option four just leaves it open. Option three recommends potentially going out once again for a third RFQ, which would, a third attempt at an RFQ, which again, could potentially drag this out quite a bit. The option two, which is an exclusive negotiation agreement, there's some pros and cons there as well, we've had some of those, the ENAs in the past that have also dragged things out for quite a number of years. Option one provides that the staff went through and put together a draft disposition development agreement, which essentially brings a city together with an identified developer to work on terms that would make it so that a project actually comes together, comes to fruition. I think that would be the best benefit to the city. So something that I would like for us, for my colleagues here to consider, staff did go through and itemized twenty-eight potential key negotiating points as part of a DDA and also have a draft DDA in the, in the staff report here. What I would recommend here is that we do move forward with option one, which is a disposition development agreement. There are still a few items that we might want to tighten up as a council, so what I would recommend is that we do move forward with option one and appoint an ad hoc committee to the council to work out those details with our staff, so that then we can go ahead within, ideally within the next thirty days, just move forward with something that is tightened and it's solid, that would be, have measurable and specific outcomes and timelines to ensure that a project, if it's going to be viable, it's going to move forward, that is going to move forward and if we have to look at other options, that becomes clear.
Let me, if that's motion, let me second it for purposes of discussion and now let me go to Councilor Martinez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilman Benavides, long overdue, thank goodness, it's finally come before us before I leave, you know, it's been long overdue and, you know, I do have some questions, I no longer sit on the Development and Transportation Commission, Committee when this was brought to us two years ago and on and so forth, we've gone through this many times and I'm glad that we're finally here in this step, but I did, and I'm not sure if I'll be appointed to the ad hoc committee or not, that's up to the mayor, but I did have some issues that I want to make sure that we review, because when, we talked about this, I wanted to make sure that there was going to be a community benefit, right? So when I talk about a community benefit and I mentioned it, you know, are we going to provide a community space, you know, to host, you know... to provide a community space, you know, to host, you know, meetings, a conference center, you know, a mini-conference center, we don't really have a conference center here, we're building a hotel, and so just wanting to bring that up as a community benefit. The other community benefit, you know, and Mr. Harrow is well-known of this, of project labor agreements, you know, making sure that we provide good-paying jobs to those that we have here, whether it be our local labor or our trades, and I know it's very complicated to put that in that kind of agreement, but I brought that up to our staff about a year and a half or so ago, when we started talking about Third and Broadway, and how can we move forward in that direction, just never got a final response, I know they were talking to labor groups, and so just wanting to make sure that we continue to do that, and I know sometimes it's not, when you're dealing with a hotel, on and so forth, how do you make all that happen, it's not as easy. But I know that many of the labor groups have been talking to my colleagues about, you know, about project labor agreements, and I know they already have one with Caribou Industries for the Third and, for the 37-story building, and so just wanting to bring that community. And another thing that's been happening within the downtown, and we've been, it's not a phenomenon, because we do have a lot of dog licenses and a lot of dogs in the city, but a request for a dog park in the downtown, and I had a dog for only a couple of months, maybe one month, but it was adorable, but I just couldn't handle it, I was traveling too much, but there are people that love their pets, and particularly their dogs, and they've been talking and asking our Parks and Rec Director and doing this survey to do a dog park at, you know, at the birch, and, you know, we lack open space, and we lack, you know, park space for, just for folks to just enjoy, kids or just adults who just want to hang out, and so, but there's an opportunity, if we look at that space and providing another community benefit, looking at the possibility of doing some kind of amenity for these folks that live here, or the surrounding community, for them to walk their dogs. And then finally, going into transportation, right, here, we have the streetcar coming, and so how do we, in regards to parking restrictions, and I know that we're removing that parking restriction, and the city is going to fulfill its 500 parking spaces, but to whoever develops here, you know, we want to change our culture in the downtown, we want to reduce parking, and so we wanting to make sure as the streetcar comes, how do we continue to support electrical vehicles within that development, how do we support, you know, Uber and Lyft, or even Zipcar, and also where you can store your bicycles for those folks that will be living there. As we create this kind of multimodal transportation system within our downtown, we need to make sure that whatever developments come, that they are part of that culture, and they enhance and provide those amenities within that development for our residents and our, and of course, the various customers that will be coming to that specific development, and of course, around the downtown. And then just finally, I see, you know, as we have roofs, and I know we have roof decks, and I know some of them, and I'm not sure, Mr. Planning Director Hassan, have we made changes to now allowing for access to rooftop decks to do whether exercise or having cafes up there? I really believe that we need to start repurposing and relooking at how we actually use all our space, and I think rooftops are amazing and great and very cool, and so did we make those changes already to our downtown?
We have actually made the changes to the building code that allows for rooftop activity by changing the, one of the first things we did last year was to change the building code to allow higher height and density, consistent with the California Building Code, which would then finish the arbitrary limits that we had put in our own zoning code with the encouragement of the fire authority. We removed that, now rooftop activities are allowed in the code.
Fantastic, and so, that's very exciting for us, because you really could utilize a lot of that space, and so I see one rooftop, possibly two, there's possibly a lot more opportunity to use our rooftop for really cool, whether it be exercise, whether it be, you know, outdoor cool cafes, or areas where people can really just congregate and just have fun, and those are my comments now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, so I have a motion to second. I too am very eager to move forward on this project, and that's part of the reason I seconded the motion. What I would envision is that we have an ad hoc committee. At this point, what I would ask Councilor Martinez is if you can just hold off, give me a little bit of time to figure out if Mayor Protem's going to be able to participate or not, so we don't have to make that decision, but I'll be back in touch with you in a matter of a few days. But what I would like to do is, at this point, you know, vote on the matter before us, assuming it passes, we'll figure out, you know, who's on the ad hoc, and then the idea is that we'll be meeting with the city attorney, and that we have this done in 30 days to bring back to council for consideration. Ms. City Manager?
It's the city manager, not the city attorney.
Right, but I thought you were raising your hand, that's why I called you.
No, I wanted to make sure that you're going to be meeting with the city manager, not the city attorney on this development.
Got it.
The issue for me is, I just need clarification as to who we're going to do a development agreement with?
It's going to be, I think, the motion is with the applicant before us, which is Caribou Industries.
Correct, yeah, that's...
And it's not an exclusive negotiating agreement, it's a development agreement, directed?
It's a DDA, we're going to attempt to do a development disposition agreement. It's a straight DDA. So with that, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. So now we can let Mayor Protem back in. And with that, let's go on to item 65B, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Those in favor, please.
Mr. Mayor, just very quickly with comment, thank you.
Go ahead.
So, what we're doing here is very important, very big, I wanting to, you know, thank our Public Works Department, you know, I think, and Fred, can you please just join us up here? This smart Santa Ana presentation, you know, and I know we're not going to do a presentation, my colleagues are eager to leave, but, you know, we talked about really, when we asked you to put this study together, and where we're at now, and what we're trying to do here, and I just want, you know, because you deserve a lot of credit, your team deserves a lot of credit, and if you just could highlight some very key, I could highlight some things, and I will highlight, but just a quick highlight, Fred, of what we're really doing here today and approving would be great.
We are, thank you, Mayor, members of council, I had the presentation prepared that would go over these things, but in a nutshell, we are putting a program together and that would address repaving of remaining streets in the city of Santa Ana that were not paved in the last process, but 40% of our streets, and that work will be done in the next three to five years. It would also protect the $72 million investment that the city made in repaving the streets, and we don't have any money to maintain those streets. It would address a major portion of deficiencies in our sidewalks and ADA system. It would implement the bike master plan throughout the city, the complete citywide bike master plan within the next three to five years as well. And the program would generate enough funds to be sustainable in perpetuity. That means that program would take care of our streets for good. We don't have to come back many years, or three years, five years down the line, and ask for another 70 or 60 million dollars to take care of the streets. So it's a major...
This is huge.
Yeah.
This is very huge, and I just, one, want to thank you, Fred, and your staff, and finally getting this done. This is really big for the city of Santa Ana, I know all our residents, they care about our roads, but what we're doing here is being able to provide funding to continue to maintain the roads. We all know that across the state of California, here in Orange County, we're very fortunate that, you know, our grades, as it pertains to our roads, are not as bad, but, you know, the investment that we made, as Fred mentioned, we need to make sure that we're able to continue to maintain, you know, our roads. You don't invest hundreds of millions of dollars in fixing them, but then not having money to maintain them. And so what we're doing here today, I think is the biggest, you know, and the most important is that we're going to have that money to do that moving forward, but also just making sure that we have a whole multimodal component, and something that I've been talking about for a long time is the sidewalks and ADA, right, and making sure that we have those ADA ramps for those special needs folks within our cities, and then as well, the sidewalks, you know, we have a lot of old trees, and a lot of the sidewalks where we have a lot of incidents, and in many cases, sometimes a lot of lawsuits that come our way because our sidewalks are in total disrepair, not because we have not been able to fix them, but because a lot of issues as it pertains to a lot of the trees that we have, and the roots just come out, and we've seen that here on Ross and other parts of the city, and so it's exciting that we're finally here, I'm very excited about the Vision Zero, and I know that's going to be becoming for us, and hoping that we'll be able to bring all of this together, but I'm more excited about, you know, having the funding to make sure that we're able to continue to maintain, because we can't always count on OCTA and Measure M1 funds and M2, our gas tax, the last time, you know, the gas tax was increased was 20 years ago, 1993, guess what? Things have changed, they're still stagnant, so we can't continue to count on those sources of funds that we used to receive to maintain our roads, to fix our roads. We have to find our own destiny, which local government is always good at doing, because we need to make sure that even though we're going to always ask the state and federal government for money, we need to make sure that we have a sound stream of revenue to continue to not only repave or fix the streets that we currently have, but the ones that are also in need, as you mentioned, 40% are still not fixed, and so with that being said, thank you, Fred, thank you to your entire Public Works staff, I just want to thank you, because this is very huge, and I'm a nerd when it comes to transportation, that's probably why I'm the most excited, and with that, Mr. Mayor, I move the item.
And I'll second, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. I'm now going to call our attention to a public hearing on item 75A, Recovery of Uncollected Costs for Abeyment of Dangerous Abandoned Buildings. Do I have any written communications, Madam City Clerk? Does anybody, I'm going to open the public hearing, does anybody wish to address the council at this time? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
So moved.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. 75B, there's a public hearing to consider affirming the weed and abeyment public nuisance fiscal report. Do we have any written communications, Madam City Clerk?
I have not received any.
I'm going to now open up the public hearing, does anybody wish to address city council on that matter? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
So moved.
Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed?
I'll be the second.
Okay.
You got it, those, we have a bunch of ayes, those opposed, motion carries. 75C, there's a public hearing to consider approving a report on water quality relative to public health goals. Do we have any written communications, Madam Clerk?
I have not received any.
I will open up the public hearing, does anybody wish to comment on this matter? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to receive and file. We have a motion from Reyna.
Second.
Second from Mayor Protem, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now we're going to recess, the city council meeting convene a joint session of the city council and the Housing Authority. Madam City Clerk, would that be item ADA then?
Yes, and we do have one speaker.
Pardon, we have a speaker?
We have one speaker.
All right, who is the speaker? Orin Williams, please.
Mayor Paludo, esteemed council members, city manager, greetings from the Santa Ana Unified School District. I'm Orin Williams, Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Governmental Relations for the district. The district reviewed the item before the council this evening, and while we're not particularly interested in the parcel that is noted, we would like to reiterate the district's desire to partner with the city on future parcel dispositions, in order to determine that there are, we believe there are opportunities for synergistic opportunities between our two agencies. Just like the council's good work in keeping some of our schools open longer, we believe that there are other opportunities and work that we could do together to benefit the residents of Santa Ana. With that said, we do want you to know that we have recently spoken with Executive Director Hagani, and we will be seeking opportunities through his office to determine where joint interests may exist. We just want to thank you and have a great evening.
Okay, before we entertain a motion, I have a question from Councilor Benavides, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The question with regard to this property here, I read the staff report, it's a parcel that it's right off the freeway, the 5 freeway, the Grand Street, Santa Ana Boulevard to exit, and it's kind of oddly shaped. I believe at one point, there was an interest from a large company in town to potentially develop the site, and as their main office headquarters, that because of the proximity to the freeway, it just seemed like an opportunity for them, so that opportunity or that interest went away, economy changed. My question though, to staff, is, at this point, the, once, if we move forward with this item, it basically would not be, this parcel would not be available for any type of development at all, right? It would just be a water well and...
I believe this location is in the back of that parcel, the large parcel, and the reason it's identified is because of hydraulic analysis, and in being very suitable in terms of putting water wells at that location in comparison to other areas within the city, so it was determined that this would be a very efficient place to put wells in and reduce the energy cost of drawing water out and creating the hydraulic analysis necessary to run our water system.
So just, I wanted to ask, at least ask a question, engage a little bit of the conversation here, because there is, there's basically, obviously the benefit directly when it comes to the water, being able to extract and just providing general need for water to our area, and flip side, there's that opportunity for development as well, because, you know, you very rarely find developable land that's freeway closed, accessible and visible, and there might be some opportunity there, more kind of the, from a market value standpoint. So we ultimately have to make a decision as to which is the greater good and benefit to the city longer term. Has there been any conversation or considerations, City Manager, with regard to marketing the property and seeing whether there would be a greater gain to the city, and still somehow being able to address some of the needs and recommendations, which is a valid, you know, need and question and proposition that our Public Works Department is proposing, but...
Thank you, Councilman Benavides, Mayor, City Council, we can do that and evaluate that as an option, and we will do that.
Thank you, I appreciate just us looking at all options and, yeah, just ultimately making a decision that makes, you know, sense longer term going forward, thank you.
So what would your pleasure be at this point?
So I don't know how long it would take, I don't know if it's something that within a month's time, I don't know if there's a sense of urgency, the, again, the proposition or the proposal here presented by Public Works is obviously one, if there's a need we want to make sure to address that, I don't know how long it would take for us to be able to do a market study.
Our quick analysis is 90 days.
Okay.
I'll make that your motion.
That would be my motion.
I'll second the motion, Mayor, but with comment.
Go ahead.
And thank you, Councilman Benavides, because I was going to vote no on it, but I'm glad that we're continuing the item, and the reason being is that, again, and eventually we have to create a process of how we purchase property and how we utilize certain properties, because this is in the tune of over $3 million, and definitely, for whatever reason, why our water management, you know, definitely the hydrology, I get all of that, is that the best use, and so how do we create a process of assuring, you know, how do we provide a community benefit, whether it be water, whether it be an open space, or any other activity that we can do on this specific site, is one of importance, we just, you know, this is coming before us, and here we are, again, asking, you know, the staff is recommending to us that they want, you know, to purchase this site, you know, so that they can build, you know, wells for... so that they can build, you know, you know, wells for pumping in and then eventually going into the aquifer. But at the same time, as we move forward with this 90-day, which I'm very supportive, if, at the same time, can you also provide us the background? Because I asked this question, we're going to be purchasing this, right? And when we talk about the water, you know, the water that we're using, is this for Santa Ana, the benefits, if for Santa Ana residents? Or the Orange County Water District, will they be benefiting as well in getting any of this water? Just only the, only the City of Santa Ana operations? Okay, great. And if you just could state that, because, you know, we also have other additional wells, I think 21, that we participate with the Orange County Water District. And so that water also goes to other cities. And I think that if we are ever going to purchase property with city funds or use city property for anything that has to do with water, if it's impart, always making sure that we're able to partner with the Orange County Water District as well and see if there's any opportunities that we can leverage. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
You did? Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now I want to direct our attention, therefore, I believe, to the Housing Authority. So I would entertain a motion on item 1 and 2 for the Housing Authority.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. So that was a joint session now of the Housing Authority, right, Madam Clerk? So do I need a notion on item 3 for the Housing Authority?
No.
Same, it's already considered. All right. So now I will adjourn the Housing Authority meeting, convene the successor agency, and entertain a motion on the consent counter for the successor agency.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries. And we'll just delete the excused absence for Councilmember Deena Hettle from that one. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I had the clerk looking around. Okay, item number 3, I would entertain a motion. It's a resolution authorizing the funding of the tax allocation bonds. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries. And Madam City Clerk, that resolution had several elements to it.
That's right.
So with that, we're going to adjourn the successor agency, come back to the City Council meeting. And I'm going to turn things over to the Mayor Protem at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know you had a pending appointment already. So why don't we have Allison Stanley come before us, if she's here, followed by Jamie Lopez. Followed by Heather Lopez. Anybody, Jamie Lopez, Heather Lopez? Going once, Ms. Lopez? Jamie, you're, the floor is yours.
I just came here today.
Go ahead and pull the mic down and so we can hear you.
Came here today just to possibly suggest to the City Council, considering banning the, in the City of Santa Ana fireworks for many reasons, other fact they're dangerous, they're dirty, and they've become completely out of control. And I don't know if that's a consideration anyone would think about, but that's pretty much what I came here for. And my daughter-in-law is also here for the same reason. She's got more reasons also on her.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
Hi, thank you for hearing me out. I'm here as well for you to consider a ban on the safe and sane, or also known as the fireworks stand fireworks. I, as a teacher, understand the fundraising is super important, that we often rely on it to fund programs that don't get the funding from government or school budgets. But I, in this instance, I feel like the cons outweigh the pros. Cons from my personal life, I've been a homeowner in Santa Ana for eight years. So I've noticed a significant increase in the amount of illegal fireworks. And I feel like by having the legal, safe and sane fireworks, it's allowing kind of an open floodgate for the type of fireworks that are shot up in the air over our roofs. And oftentimes, the police are overwhelmed by the amount of calls that they get for noise complaints, safety hazards regarding that. I have dogs, two golden retrievers, that have to be medicated because they can't comprehend why all these gunshot-sounding fireworks are going off for a month before the holiday and for weeks afterwards. My baby now has night terrors and wakes up at least once a night from one of these loud fireworks going off. Our backyard is significantly dead due to the water shortage. And there were many fireworks that went off throughout the month that impose a fire hazard if they were to land in our dead plants or on our roof. I worry that I would be a victim of a house fire. Afterwards, the aftermath of the fireworks on my street, nobody cleans up after them. They're everywhere. My, in conclusion, I propose that if you are going to allow legal fireworks to be sold, that actions need to be taken. Either more officers need to be in each neighborhood just to be a visible presence, they don't have to knock on doors, or that you have the city high schools host a fireworks show. It's a paid attended venue and ban fireworks. And then if you to see the big fireworks, you go to that show, and the organizations can profit from them. And finally, if the, if it's a dance club that's hosting a fireworks booth, they need to come out and clean the streets and make sure that those streets are kept clean. And it should be a volunteer thing that they have to put in in order to get that funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Those were very good comments. We appreciate that, both you and your mother. Britten Devero, followed by Iya Taglin.
Mayor and members of City Council, thank you. I wanted to reference an item that was on the agenda two weeks ago. The emergency ordinance. And I mentioned last time I was here, I'm a Santa Ana resident. I'm a business owner, and I'm a woman in recovery. And something that's so important about having these recovery homes is it gives people like me a chance. It gives people from all different kinds of backgrounds a chance. We create safer communities. We create job opportunities. We get people plugged into school, healthier families. One of the things that our company, DMORI Healthcare, provides to the community is substance use disorder treatment, but we also provide sober living care and treatment of mental illness. And I want to, I'm going to follow up with an email to each of you individually to offer a tour to you, to, you know, create lines of communication if there's anything that you think in our industry that we can do better or we can do differently. I'm very open to that. This resource is so important. So I feel like it behooves me to take as much time with you and with other members of our community to help kind of close the gap because I think there's a lot of stigma and alienation that goes towards people that have mental illness and people that have substance use disorders. So I just wanted to thank you for hearing me out last time. And again, tonight, I know that the moratorium item is not on the agenda, and I was curious if it's going to be back on the agenda, or if you can answer that?
It's indefinitely off calendar right now. But thank you for coming and sharing your comments.
And thank you, thank you for your service. The talk tonight about the wages, I just, I thank you. It's a big deal to do what you do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Sami Yentor. Regarding this item, I would, I won't say that I have no other agenda to coming here. Because first, I want to save life of my innocent son, that my family is a target for years of just injustice. I am here for justice, for justice, for my son, for my family, and for every decent person. And I like to come here because I see in you a lot decent, fine people. First of all, thank you, Mr. Sami Yentor, for very good standing of our constitution. Also, thank you, Mr. Tinnajer. He had just very unusual speech in protecting people and staying behind of the innocent people. I want to say a good word for Mr. Benavides, who trying to understand situation, my family, and he is always, I see him very honest person as much as Ms. Amiskua. Thank you. But my topic, I want to save a life of my innocent son. And that's, I want to say to the public, that sadistic fascist mafia boss, which is CEO of Orange County Regional Center, he never did not come to the public. He in the shadow. He receiving million of public money to put in his pocket and to somehow find way to work for him. The court, the same as Judge Liam Mobley, they don't save. They don't work for us people. They work for him. I don't know how the public defender, John Falden, can come and live his normal life when he is serving against him. I'm sorry, I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Taglin. Thank you for your comments. Robert, you're next.
Hello, Honorable Mayor Protem and San Ana City Council's Robert Taglin, Brother Nate Taglin. As I stated previously, my brother Nate Taglin has been illegally confined in the 903 South Harmon Group Home in Santa Ana for nearly three years, in which he was removed twice by the Irvine Police. The Irvine Police Department removed him from the same 22 Creek Road home. And he was placed on a hold, and he was released two weeks later by Judge, by order of Judge Schultz. And in contempt of that order, the Regional Center of Orange County placed him in the Santa Ana Group Home, in which he's been illegally confined for nearly three years. And one year, seven months later, decided to use, they were unhappy with, they weren't happy with the fact that he was released because he's not supposed to be, it's illegal to confine a person for no reason. So they decided to relitigate the same evidence and find another judge, judge shopping, and then make a decision, which is unconstitutional completely. So their whole trial was a farce. And there's, I mean, appealing it is very simple. It's an issue of if it's all relitigated evidence, you throw it out in the garbage. And their whole decision was, is completely illegal. Now, the bottom line is you have the police, who when, my parents were conservators, they still didn't, when he was, even when he was brought to the hospital, all of his medical workers were concealed. And you have this issue of discrepancy between when he's in, when a person, individual is in the home and the police have, a bunch of police officers come to remove an individual without any exigent circumstances, without any reasoning. And they write extensive police reports. So certainly, the Irvine Police are good, can write many, many paragraphs. Whereas the Santa Ana Police, a big problem where you have an individual who's been illegally confined for two years under very dangerous drugs, and they don't allow visitors, and the police are, instead of, whereas the Irvine Police were very quick to come into the home twice, even though they knew very well it's the same home, and why are you kidnapping him twice? Only because the Orange County Regional Center Director wrote, told his staff to write a report, which we have the reports to prove that they wrote a report. Whereas one, over 150 reports, and the police don't prove whether he is not, whether the reports are true or not, and they don't, they conceal all the evidence. And that's a problem where the judges, at least the lower judges courts, they're not going to, they refuse to suspend the conservative, deny, 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 regardless of other. But I think I'm going to get, that we're going to have to get an order, maybe from a higher court, to order them to test him. And he's going to be, they're going to prove, he's going to be proven to be in exigent circumstances, and then he's going to be released. I don't know. Do the police consider the whole court system to be only one center judge with Mobley who can deny everything? No, there exists a court system, and I don't know why they are so sure of themselves that they can continue this crime. So I hope he's released soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Rick Niedemeyer, followed by James Kendrick.
I'm took, I wrote notes. Good evening. First of all, my name is Rick Niedemeyer. I've been a resident since 1975, so over 41 years in the City of Santa Ana. Is it possible that maybe in the near future, the soccer lease, could get an update on the Dan Young Soccer Complex and how long, when the completion is due? I know they've been working on it day and night, but it would help us get, plan our schedules for the next season. Number two is under 29A, Mr. Reyna always says buy and shop in Santa Ana. I notice we're buying two vehicles from Curzy Chevrolet in San Diego, California. Doesn't, doesn't follow those lines of buy and shop in Santa Ana. Okay? I think with the fireworks, I'm just going to touch on that briefly. We had a great four days in our stand, selling state and Orange County approved fireworks. Speaking with many of my folks taking some of the fireworks back this morning. Every city has the same problem. It's not Santa Ana has illegal fireworks going off. It's every city, even cities that don't allow fireworks. So it's, don't think it's just a Santa Ana problem. I noticed a couple of meetings ago, you approved a $1,000 fine for illegal fireworks. We didn't get the word out, or the city didn't get the word out. I just, I can't believe that we approved something and we didn't get it out to let people know. A gentleman across the street from my house is shooting mortars off. And I walked out and reminded him about the fireworks law, new law, and he said even nothing about it. So the community didn't know. Maybe that's not going to fix it, but at least to get the word out. Use the billboards for the, the electronic billboards at the schools. The city has one here at the stadium here. You drive in any other city in the last month, illegal fireworks are on their little electronic billboards if you drive in other cities, about the fines. I have a touchy subject, but I want to, I'm going to bring it up anyway. We had an incident last night at our fireworks stand where a gentleman parked his car within 10 feet of our stand and just took off going to the fireworks show at the Centennial Park. We called the police department. They came out. He mysteriously appeared and moved his car, which was nice. But I was, in general, just talking to the police officer, and I asked, what do you do when you see these illegal fireworks going off? And his, both of the officers said, we've been told if we don't see it being shot off, then to do nothing. Doesn't work. That just doesn't work. We need, we need to fix this. If we don't see, if we close our eyes, then we're never going to see this stuff go off. Two more things on my list. The nonprofits for, to the city pay a business license of $244. And if it's 85 stands, that's $20,000 the city collects. Every nonprofit has a business license already. Why do we have to buy another one? Okay, I haven't figured that one out yet, and I'm asking that question, so maybe somebody can get back with me on that. Building permit, we put a stand up for four days and it costs us $100 a stand. It's $8,500 again. Where does that money go? Two more things.
Go quickly, Rick.
Okay. Number three, we have to have a lift permit, which is fine. But we also have a fire inspection for this, for the Orange County Fire Authority for $144 for them to walk in, one door, out the door, said, looks like a fireworks stand to me. 85 stands. That's another $12,000. Where's the money go? Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Jim Kendrick, you're our last speaker. No pressure. Did you have a? What was your name? Madam Clerk? Just go ahead and come up, and if you, we don't have one for you, you can fill one out after you speak, so.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. And you know, again, here I am.
Good evening, Council members, and you know, again, here I am. David, we talked 60 days ago about the tobacco license. I paid, I paid my license, I paid the fine. Here it's 60 days later, and you guys passed the budget, but I, I went through the budget, and I, I, my line item. Guess what? You increased it again for next year. Another 3% increase. Why? I, there's been no report given back on how, where this money's going, you have not received anything, so where is, why all of a sudden, there's another increase, now it's two years in a row, we've had an increase? Can you, any reports have been generated, where this money's going? Why are we gonna be 665 dollars? The state just approved a new tobacco license, starting this year, 265 dollars. Pretty excessive, because of the city, and I asked you guys last time about looking into the other cities that charge 340 to 365, and the state's now charging 265, and we're still gonna be 665 next year. It's a little hard on small business, especially with all the new laws. And the other thing. Michelle, thank you. Public Works called me back, another two-year contingency on traffic on Broadway, because we're still studying, we're still doing this, it's been six and a half years since I got hit by a car. Last week, we had three accidents on one day. We had a rollover at Santa Ana Boulevard and Broadway, a major, two people went to the hospital. One day, three accidents on Broadway, Santa Ana Boulevard, 5th Street, and down at 2nd Street, some, a little fender bender. Right now, there's one out here at Ross and 4th Street, another fender bender. I'm personally tired of excuses from Public Works, how many more studies do we have to do? I looked at your budget for capital improvements, there's nothing even mentioned in the budget for your capital improvements, for anything on Broadway. What's going on? I think staff just does what they want, they're not following direction from council. They called back, oh yeah, we're gonna do another traffic, you know what? This has been going on for six years, since I got hit by a car there. Action speaks louder than words, and you all know that phrase, there's no action here, it's all words, it's all lip action. I appreciate them calling me back, but you know what? There's no action. Another thing, you guys talk about marketing, every day I see the ART bus go up and down Broadway, taking people to Anaheim, the Bowers. How come I see South Coast Plaza, Anaheim, I never see a bus promoting Santa Ana, that's our, our assets. Hello? Why are we doing, spending money that, one of those buses can't be promoting the tourists that come out of the Anaheim Resort area to us? Anyway, comments on that again, again, how many people are gonna have to get hurt on Broadway?
Thank you, Jim, and I, ma'am, do you wanna make your comments and then fill out a card afterwards? Just state your name on the, on the mic for, for the record.
Hi. Actually, discovered what time the city council meeting was, it's two weeks ago.
Go closer to the mic.
I came by here about two weeks ago, but I couldn't stay, and I dropped off some petition flyers, and I was hoping that I could get your support. I'm familiar with this downtown area with the homeless population, and I know it's been a problem for probably 20 years, off and on, but I have a solution that I'm proposing right across the street from where I live, is a Fairview Developmental Center, and they're gonna be closing it down in 2018. And there is room right now, they only have, it can hold like about 2,300 residents, but they only have about 270. So there's room for about 1,400 beds for these people, and they have support services, they have a huge kitchen, they have a nursing staff, they have doctors, they have a power plant, they have classrooms, they have buses, they have all this wraparound services for permanent supportive housing that a lot of the homeless people need, and I just, I really hate to see it go to waste, and so I wanna get as much support as I can. What I have is, because it's a state facility, it's owned by, or controlled by Jerry Brown, I'm petitioning him with a change.org petition, and anybody, anywhere can sign it. And I think if we can get enough people, and there's such a huge need, I mean, permanent supportive housing, housing first, and it can save taxpayers a lot of money, because it reduces, for the homeless population, it reduces incarceration by like 78%, it reduces police calls, it reduces homeless in hospitals, the whole thing. So I just, I think it could really help you guys, and it could help the people out in the streets, and I just hate to see it go to waste, and if I can just leave these in case nobody got them last time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the clerk right there. Give it to the clerk. Thank you. So with that, we're gonna go to comments, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Member of City Council, in lieu of City Manager comments, I'd like to give a report on the 4th of July as promised.
Okay.
I'd like to ask the Deputy Chief to come up and be ready for questions. Starting out with some good news, we had the best attendance ever for the 4th of July celebration, a centennial with over 8,000 people visiting. Unfortunately, we did have an increase in firework-related calls, and it was a 35% increase from 638 this year, as opposed to 473. We also had a slight decrease in the Orange County Fire Authority responses. We did provide 26 administrative citations, 10 arrests were made, we did have two serious injuries. One person had a fire, a rocket fired at them, and it hurt them, a 76-year-old boy, and a 21-year-old male had severe damage to both hands. We had 200 pounds of illegal fireworks seized, and we did obviously have the peak activity on the 4th of July between 8:00 PM and 11:00 PM. There were no injuries to police or firefighters, and I don't know, Deputy Chief, if you have any other highlights from, from what I just spoke of?
Probably the two most important ones were the injuries to the individuals, one was self-inflicted, it was a firework that he had in his own hands that blew up, but the other one was an assault with a deadly weapon, where somebody fired it at, at the 16-year-old boy, and it exploded right as it caught to his hand, and his hand was severely damaged. We had quite a bit, listening to some of the public comments, there was quite a police response out, the first, second, third, and fourth. We had 11 officers out on the first, 22 and 25 on the second, third, and then 33, 35 officers out on July 4th, specifically addressing the fireworks issue and trying to, to track it down, but it was, you know, the officers that were out noted that there was a significant increase from prior years of fireworks that they experienced.
Thank you. Thanks for that, I think, as we go to Council members, and we may have questions, and thank you for that, Deputy Chief. I'm gonna start over here. Okay? Got it. Angie, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to the legal fireworks, I'd be interested, can you repeat how many fines were given? I know we raised the fines to 1,000, it was only 26 fines total, citations.
That's my understanding, it's 26 citations at a thousand dollar minimum?
Okay.
It's 26,000.
Now, also, I know the school district, there, it's their summer break, but I think we were supposed to get a robocall, did, did that go out at all? From what I understand, the district had agreed to send out a robocall to let, inform people of the increased fines, I'm not sure if that went out or not.
We will confirm, that was our understanding, but we will confirm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Reyna, please.
Yes. First, I'd like to report that I had an opportunity to attend Naleo Conference, absolutely phenomenal information, excuse me. One of the workshops, which was including reentry programs, a program in Texas had implemented this program, and there's a couple of guard, safeguards that they had put into, into place, but the most significant information that stood out to me was that, over the course of the program, they were able to shut down three prisons. That is absolutely phenomenal, that is absolutely phenomenal. I wanna thank my colleague, Michelle Martinez, who's the past president or president, past president, to bring in that type of information. I think we really need to bring that to California and replicate as much as we possibly can, because that was some definitely powerful information, but, so I really appreciate being at Naleo and getting that type of resources. Like always, we live in a desert, doesn't look like it, but be water-wise as often as you possibly can. This weekend, there's a couple of events going on, excuse me. This Friday, in partnership with Santa Ana ALCS, the Youth and Government will be hosting a youth leadership conference for about five hours, from 5:30 to 10:30, at the Santa Ana ALCS. If you have a high school student or incoming high school student, and you're interested in having them participate, please have them sign up, or, or come to, to sign up at the gate, at the door. Second, we're about to utilize our, our first movie in the park with the city of Santa Ana, we'll be at El Salvador Park, the word has been getting out, a lot of positive feedback, and a lot of parents are eager to bring their entire families out, so if you have some time, come out to El Salvador Park. We'll be starting about 7 o'clock, the movie will start at dusk, and like always, shop Santa Ana. The movie is this Saturday at El Salvador Park, again, will start at 7, the movie will start at dusk. Thank you. We'll see you there.
Councilor Benavides, please.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, with regard to the fireworks, we've been since, I think right around 8:30 yesterday evening, started receiving emails, I've received them throughout the day. There was quite a bit of information, as was referenced by one of the speakers, that was promoted in other cities with regard to fines, the fact that fireworks being illegal, that there was, I think, a lot more that we could have done. Still, nonetheless, the, our attempt was to have a significant increase in the fine to deter people, and I know through social media and other means, we worked on doing that, but I, I think we, we still probably could have done more. I was frankly very, I know we talked about having the industry, the companies partner with us to, to help get the word out, didn't see that happen. So nonetheless, we still have an issue, a concern, I don't think that there was much of a reduction, if any, from last year. This year, we've had, we had an additional couple of injuries, significant ones. I think it is something that we're, we're going to have to spend some time evaluating how we address this, because it only is becoming a more serious issue and concern, and so, you know, the residents, we, they came out last year, they came out a number of times through Public Safety Committee, and here at the council, asking for us to respond, and we took some action as a council in response to residents' concerns. Unfortunately, the action that we took was seemingly not, not enough, so I do think that we need to go back and revisit, and look at whether, yeah, what our options are, and I think frankly, I think everything's back on the table, from my standpoint. We do need to provide some type of relief to our community from, from the impacts of specifically the illegal fireworks. Switching gears, I also had an opportunity to, to attend the National Association of Latino Elected Officials Conference in, in Washington DC, and do wanna thank Councilwoman Martinez, who was the outgoing president of Naleo, and quite a bit of a number of different resources, education, tools, for those of us in attendance. One of the things I did wanna bring up, spent a little bit of time talking, and again, it was in DC, and there is quite a bit of rich history, obviously, in, in our nation's, that the, our nation's capital, but one of the things that clearly stands out is the amount of investment that has been made toward capturing history and displaying it by way of, of public art. Monuments, obviously, are significant, a significant draw, and there's investment that's, that has, the city and, and the country has had to, has made, but it's, there's, there's a certain amount of richness of culture, and I was thinking about, oh, you know, what are our own monuments in Santana? What is the public art that people are drawn to, people are able to see? And frankly, I think the only thing I was able to come to, that came to mind, or significant, was the, the Orange County Courthouse, the old courthouse, which is not a city location, but yet it's, it's a beautiful asset and history nonetheless. Something that I, that I would wanna encourage us to think about, is, you know, every so often, we've had a bit of, of some funds, a surplus, or, or something that sometimes we pour into a project, an effort, then, that then is, you know, after a while, those funds are gone, and, and we don't necessarily have a tangible asset that future generations will be able to see and appreciate and benefit from. So it's something that I just wanna propose for us as a, as a council to think about, I know we have an arts commission, there's a certain amount of funds we put, dedicate there, but I wanna bring this up a little bit more, maybe at some point, we, we put together an ad hoc committee of the council to think through, just these opportunities, again, to capture our nation, our city's history, and, and to be able to capture it by way of some type of, or several sculptures, monuments, something that, again, would, would be able to highlight and celebrate, who we are as a city, who we've been, and where we're going. So with that, just wanna, just wish everybody a good evening, and to encourage folks to support local business, support our local economy, and shop in the city of Santana. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Martinez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start off by one also disclosing that I attended Naleo, and it was great to be there, I was exhausted, glad I'm no longer the president, even though it was a great experience, just a lot of work to do, three days of full-on activity, no rest, but I had the opportunity to moderate, which I was really excited about, Housing in America, had the opportunity to sit next to some really amazing speakers, but more importantly, one amazing one that has been leading the path as it pertains to affordable housing, Henry C. Snedels. And really, it was quite interesting, Mayor Protam was in that, and he talked about granny flats and other ways of how we can create housing, I was like, oh my God, I was just talking about this at the last council meeting about this issue, and so he's like, I would hope that your city council would support like, something like that, Michelle, I thought you guys were very progressive, is what he said to me, Henry C. Snedels, and so, that was a really great session on housing and a lot of opportunity. We also had HUD present to us a lot of the funding opportunities, and that, I didn't realize as well, that there is funding available that maybe our staff can take a look at as it pertains to retrofit of some of our housing structures. There's actually, they receive a lot of money, HUD really sees a lot of money, they said, for those, for retrofit and seismic, as it pertains to housing, and opportunities for folks that do have older housing structures, how we can get some of that funding here to us here locally. And then I also got to actually participate as president and, and as a council member on another panel, specifically with women, and felt that was very fascinating, and probably one of the most attended sessions was Women in Politics. And, you know, where do we go, you know, it's very historic at this moment, as you know, one of the presidential candidates is a woman, and so it was interesting to see that that was a very full-on pan, a discussion, and almost in full attendance, and there was even a couple men in there, so I found that very fascinating, and I enjoyed the, the discussion of the various women from across the country, in particular, from New York, Councilmember Julisa Ferreira, who's now on the Naleo, our Vice President of Naleo Board, and the great work that she's doing in New York. And then finally, just wanna congratulate Mayor Protam Sarmiento, who's taking the leadership, and hopefully, we'll continue to have someone in Santa Ana after he gets off the board in six years. He just joined the Naleo Board, so welcome and congratulations, Vince, and hopefully you keep the tradition going for us in Orange County. And so Ron left, Ron Garcia from Brea, left it to me, and now I'm leaving it to you, that we continue, we're not Los Angeles, and we're not San Diego, Orange County deserves a seat at the table when we're discussing issues, and specifically at the national level, and so. Secondly, I do also want to make mention of the fireworks and all the emails, I, I really believe, look, good, bad, or indifferent, however folks are going to view me, is that there is a major problem, when you, when, difficult to sleep, when you woke up in the morning, I was like, is the sky bright, or is it gray? I think it was the worst than ever before, and so whether these fines and these discussions they were having, I have not, this was really bad, and it should be of great concern of us, yes, there was only two incidents, but let me tell you that this problem is only gonna get more severe unless we have a, a real strategic plan of how to target this, and we didn't do a good enough job, for whatever reason, the robocalls didn't work, we didn't go out and flyer, I don't, you know, I'm not sure how much money was invested to marketing, you know, this fine. not sure how much money was invested to marketing, you know, this fine, but at the end of the day, 26 citations, how many of those folks will actually pay that fine is another thing, and so what is the cost in comparison to, you know, one day or two days of fireworks? And, you know, we have to really weigh what's going on here, it's very problematic for us, and I think, you know, got to take it to, I believe that we need to take it to the voters, for them to decide if this is what they want to do, or having, you know, figuring out a way to help the different nonprofits to continue to raise monies. I know there's different ways to do it, but, you know, it shouldn't be at the expense and the quality of life of the residents here in the city. And I was just baffled all night, and then this morning to wake up to what we saw, and I'm not sure many of you guys experienced that, that it was, it was, it was gray, the air was horrible to breathe, and I could imagine the, how many toxins were up in the air, and, you know, our children having to breathe that, and myself having to breathe that, breathe that kind of air, and so I'm hopeful that this discussion will come back, and hopefully we take it to the voters to make a decision. And then finally, just wanted to get a quick update from our staff on the branding and marketing RFP. I'm not sure where we're at, I know with, you know, that was, one of them was taken off the table because we no longer have an Economic Development Director. That was important to us, I'm wanting to make sure we get back on track, if we can get an update. Also, an update on the general plan, we've invested, you know, a million dollars last year, a million dollars this year, where is that money? Where are we at in the plan? What are the next step? Who are we hired to move on with that? And then finally, the community engagement strategy, where are we at as well with the community engagement strategy? Here we talking about fireworks and other issues, again, no kind of coordination of how we actually engage the community on these particular issues, and how we actually outreach to them via social media or any kind of media. We have to have a plan in place if we're going to want certain things to work. We just can't just say willy-nilly, we're going to give a thousand dollar fine, and hopefully someone finds out, and, you know, education is extremely important, and how you communicate and how you educate our residents is vital, and we need to have a process of how to do that, and that's why the community engagement plan was so important. And so if I could get an update on those three things, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I guess I should start off also by disclosing that I attended the Naleo Conference as well. So be careful what you wish for, I'm going to be having some big shoes to fill now that Councilmember Martinez is going to be leaving the, not only the Board, but the presidency at Naleo, and I want to thank her for her leadership there. I know that it was probably one of the better conferences that I've attended that Naleo's hosted, and I think I've attended almost all of them, but, you know, I think the comments were great. I know that she was mentioning the session on affordable housing. Well, I had a chance to meet with not the former HUD Director Cisneros, but the present, Julian Castro, and he was saying that it's so, it's a bipartisan, well-supported, national issue now, that housing is just very, very critical, not just in Orange County or in Santa Ana, but all over the country where people are just not housed well, they're not able to access affordable housing, they're just not able to live that American dream that many of us had, where our parents owned a home, and that was, you know, something that was sacred to the whole value system that we have here, and once you lose that, you just have, you just have all kinds of other problems that, that, you know, offshoot from that. So I know that there's been some discussion about amending our affordable, our Housing Opportunity Ordinance, which allows for in lieu housing. Secretary Castro said, look, that's one of the few ways that we can combat what's going on, is to try to give some relief to communities that incentivize the construction and the development of new affordable housing. So I hope this council will stand firm with what we've drafted, and look at, look at other communities like Irvine, that's much, I guess, you know, has much less of a problem than we do with workforce housing, and they do a huge in lieu fee relative to ours. And so, you know, I just want us to be, you know, wary of that, we were just at a conference where they said it was a national issue, and so I hope that we continue to be courageous and valiant and forward-thinking, and remember the community that we represent. And let's make sure that we understand that this has probably got some of the lowest AMI in the entire county. I want to say that Fourth of July, I wasn't able to attend the event that was city-sponsored, but I understand it was very well-attended, it was a success. We need to have that become, you know, something that's going to draw more of a crowd. I too was a little bothered by a lot of the illegal fireworks that went off. My daughter and I were awake till 1:00 in the morning listening to this, so it was, it was a little tough, and I had a slew of emails from people who were disappointed. Now, my worry is that people get so angry that they scapegoat the nonprofits who are selling this, and through no fault of their own, are blamed for a lot of the illegal fireworks that are out there. But I did speak to some counterparts in other communities where they use messaging better, and I know the mayor and I were talking about maybe having a campaign begin much earlier, where people also understand that there is a thousand dollar fine, which is extremely severe, that they may be suffering from if they do, are in possession or activate, you know, illegal fireworks, but that's something that we just need to think about more. I was a little surprised not to see the fireworks issue on the agenda, my understanding is that it was supposed to come back to us and we were going to have it to deliberate on, but my thought was always to bring it back to the voters, have them decide, it's a complex issue, none of us up here have the, you know, the silver bullet and the answer to that. I think it's something that the voters will eventually have to tackle. I want to thank Councilmember Amesqua for her service on the OCFA, and, you know, some more big shoes to fill. So look, Michelle, I am trying to pick up some slack, picking up, you know, your, you know, the void, the void you're leaving and the vacuum that the council member is leaving, but I look forward to working with you, Chief, on the OCFA. I know that so far it's been a smooth transition for us from our department to yours, so I look forward to continue to serving with you. Finally, ma'am, I want to thank you for coming before us and talking about the homeless issue. I had a chance to attend a discussion on the homeless issue as it affects South Main, one of our corridors in the city, one of our primary corridors, and we had somebody from Supervisor Andrew Doe's office there, so that's somebody you may want to go speak to as well. Primarily, this issue having to deal with the homeless doesn't fall within our jurisdiction directly, they're the safety net agency that's supposed to provide resources and address these concerns, and when we were there before all those businesses, I didn't have many answers that they provided, so I'm very disappointed. There's millions, millions of dollars of assets and resources that they have that they could use, especially in this central county, because this is where most of the problem is. We probably shoulder most of the burden of the homeless population in the county. So, you know, look, I hope our super, and one of the responses I had from his Chief of Staff was that, in the 15 months he's been here, he's done more than the 15 years prior of work that's been done in the homeless, for the homeless issue. I don't see it, if anything, in the last 15 months, I've seen the problem get worse. So I don't know what he's talking about, I don't know where the relief is, you know, appointing a czar is all fine and well, but if the czar isn't doing anything, and they're, you know, closing down their, and fencing up their campus, and they're pushing it out to City Hall, that doesn't make a whole lot of, a lot of sense, that doesn't mean you're solving the problem, you're just pushing it on to somebody else. So I don't think that they're very far-sided over there, they're unfortunately just, you know, just kind of stumbling around, so I, I would, you know, suggest to you, ma'am, go and speak to them over there across the street. Again, it's within their primary jurisdiction to do that, but with that, I'll say goodnight, and everybody hopefully has a safe night.
Thank you for those comments, Mayor Protem. Just for the record, I did not attend the Naleo Conference. I did not attend the Naleo Conference, but, 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 wait a minute, I did, I do have to disclose, I attended the US Conference of Mayors in Indianapolis, and it was very good, and as a matter of fact, one of the things that I learned there, and this is, you know, you go to these conferences, sometimes you learn something, some, you hope, yeah, but, you know, sometimes you don't, it's kind of boring, lots of meetings, same old stuff, sometimes there's new stuff. In this case, one of the new things was this technology that I want us to look into, which tracks sound. So, you know, for the fireworks or for illegal discharge of firearms, you have a system, other cities are doing it, it's not overwhelmingly expensive, and when you deploy, you know, you know exactly where you're deploying, and it'll give you an address, it'll give you GPS coordinates, it'll be the whole nine yards. And so I think, look, we can go to the voters and say, do you want to ban them or not? And if they say, no, we don't want to ban them, we still have a problem that we haven't done anything about. So I think it's incumbent upon us to do everything we can to say, can we do better? I know, you know, once upon a time, we worked really, really hard at illegal discharge of firearms, because there was a time many years ago with, you know, with what happened last night, used to happen all the time, except that there were bullets. And then that became a deterrent, and, yeah, but it's not up in the air, and not like it used to be with AK-47s, meaning it's not constant. Yes, there's still guns, and, you know, hopefully we can do more about that and all, but, but as it relates to fireworks, I think we can do a better job. I think we can do a better job with the campaign, I think we can communicate better, I think we can, you know, have the nonprofits also participate, and try to communicate with all their patrons, and the people that they're selling to, and the members that they have. And I think we can use technology, so I really want to get this program, I want to get it to the chief, and, you know, both of our, you know, Fire Association, Fire Authority, and PD, and let's look at, you know, can we use something that is more proactive, and that can assist us on the enforcement side? Because right now, it's a little bit crazy in a sense that, you know, we see fireworks all over the place, people are running around, there's calls, you know, people arrive, you know, things are shut down, you didn't see it, et cetera, et cetera. If we had technology where we could be deploying people before the calls come in, and if we could work with code enforcement and the city attorney in such a fashion that, you know, it's kind of like a radar gun, if you're out there and you're speeding, and you get clocked, you can argue all you want, but all of a sudden, there's empirical data that says, you know, your vehicle is going at this speed at this particular place, it's, you know, you kind of go to traffic school or pay the fine or whatever, well, if we can do something, say, your address, here's what was going on, and we've got it. And then if we can, you know, somehow verify other ways, I think it'll help. So I want to bring that to the council and to the discussion, and I want to also congratulate, you know, Councilwoman Martinez, I know that she worked very, very hard at Naleo. By the way, I think it's one of the benefits of serving on the council for 12 years, you know, you get to know colleagues, you get to know people across the country, and then when you want to be in a leadership position, that extra time, I think, really is a benefit. So with that, I hope that Mayor Protem is able to follow in those big footsteps, hopefully he can, and, but, but now he's going to Naleo, right? And he's going to the Orange County Fire Authority where Angie was at, so what I have to do is ask either Angie or Michelle, what else are they going to do, because Mayor Protem will follow?
You still sit on Saturday, and so you want to take the toll roads, the Orange County, the O-CO, do you want to take the U-45 waters?
It was a joke, but she took me seriously.
I want to give them up, I want to go, I can't handle those no more.
All right. So with that, no, 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 I'm good. I'm good for now. I'm good for now. So with that, we will, we will adjourn this meeting, and we'll get together, I think our next meeting's in August, right? So we'll meet again in a month. Everybody have a fine, fine month.